We want to welcome you to our city commission study session. We ask that you turn off or silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at six P M. and at midnight and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this moment, we actually have five items currently on our study session. And we will be starting off with item number two, semi ending report from the Leavenworth Public Library.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me here to visit you tonight. I shared a copy of a hopefully very colorful and interesting report that reflects a 2022 snapshot. And when I was here to receive the mayor's proclamation for National Library Week, I distributed a report, a quarterly report that gave everybody some stats. And I know numbers don't tell the whole story. But I did want to make sure that everyone had a clear picture of the way that library services are, it's very high demand in the community, how that demand is growing. And to give you an idea, based on a full year of 2022, the kind of things that we do, the number of books we buy, the number of people we serve, the who's checking out what. So there's a snapshot for 22. And it clearly indicated a significantly increased demand. And I don't want to, I guess, take any bets on it. But given the pace of increase we've experienced in the first quarter of this year, I'm hoping that by next year, we will be back up to the pre COVID levels. The number of people visiting, the number of items going out, it should approach that level again, which would be great. So all the things that are, all the other data that you'll see in this report from the, from the succeeding pages are all from the first quarter of this year. But I did want to start, I guess, by saying thank you very much for your continued support for the library. We're hoping that we serve the community the way that you expect. And I want to ensure any kind of questions that you have about what we're doing, how we're doing it, please let me know. We were working with, there was a, the Leavenworth Arts Organization came to us and with a proposal back last year, they wanted, they thought about putting a mural on the wall, outside wall of the library. There were some structural issues with that wall. There are some of the panels that are detached and coming off. So we thought, well, what about inside? We have a mural in the corner of our, of our children's room. It's been there for quite a while and we could use some freshening up. Again, part of our motivation for this were comments that we heard from the community about the interior of the library needs some, some, some sprucing up to look a little more attractive. So this is the mural that was reviewed multiple times. The artist's name is Brooke Bristow, and she will paint that on a wall in the youth services department. And we're also planning to use it as kind of a come see the artist at work program for kids over the summer. We have not yet coordinated an exact date for the work itself. It's going to be paid for by a grant we received from the Trust Company of Kansas. They give us a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars on an annual basis to support the arts, and this seemed like a perfect use for that. And I know in the city's comprehensive plan, there's a, there's talk about public art, murals, walls. You want to see that around the city and the outside. And I know that the library doesn't rest in that specific district you mentioned in the plan, and this will be inside to start. But again, I think it's in, in line with the city's theme that art is an important part of quality of life in Leavenworth, and we'd like to start with there. We have a rock garden that we're, we're building outside. It's about ready to go. Unfortunately, we had a break in, so we have a big plywood panel where a window used to be. And until that glass is repaired, I don't want to have a ribbon cutting for a garden when there's a big old piece of plywood sitting there. But we're pretty much ready to go on that. And if you've been to our library, you look out the atrium window, there's a big wall there. And that would be perfect for an exterior mural. So if this interior project works well, we could have an additional mural in that location to, again, enhance the, the role of the city and, again, the meet the, the city's desire for more public art, improve the appearance of the library. And I know it's really hot out there and could be really noisy when the air conditioning is running, but I looked at the temperature, there are months out of the year, even in November, more than half the days are sixty degrees and dry. So I doubt if we'll have a lot of people out there in July unless they're pretty hardy people. But that space should be, be able to use by people a lot of, major parts of the year. And having that wall with a nice mural will, I think, only make it more attractive for that use.
Quick question, when's, what's the timeframe on getting the window fixed?
The contractors have been there, and I think, I know how, kind of gave them a nudge. So they were there last week to make sure that they understood the width of the glass. We kept all of the framework that held the glass in place, so they measured that. I haven't heard exactly when the, the work will be done. I don't know how, given the supply chain issues for practically everything, I don't know how easy or hard it is to get a big sheet of tempered glass or how long it takes. But that is in the works. We, just some, a few quick examples of the type of community support that we have received. There was a retired math teacher who passed away named John Mitchell and apparently highly, very highly respected. Thirty donors contributed fifteen hundred dollars to the library in his memory. The foundation wrapped up their fundraising campaign and seventy-eight donors gave eleven thousand five hundred and five dollars. National Library Giving Day was in April, when eleven donors gave nine hundred and twenty. And just individual donors through various times of the year for this first quarter for various services have donated fourteen hundred dollars. For the Kansas Room, Summer Reading, of course, is always an attractive program for people, so contributions have come in for that, too. Just to give you an idea of personnel expenses or meeting projections, I know that's from all government, personnel costs are, represent the lion's share of the expenses of running the organization because it's really a major part of our product. We not only have books on the shelf, we have trained, experienced and quality people to provide services. Again, these numbers are the first quarter, so you can see our total circulation compared to the first quarter of last year is up forty-six percent. The numbers are very impressive. What I'd like to point out, though, if you look at the number of children's programs, they're down forty-five percent, but attendance is up sixty-five percent. And I think that reflects the kind of imagination that our program people have, the way we've marketed these programs and the way that we have intentionally designed programs that will attract more people instead of sponsoring a lot of programs or holding a lot of programs that don't attract audiences. So I thought that was very revealing that the quality programs is really, we've really upped our game and it's having a great effect in the number of people that come into the library. The number of items that we have is on the next page, just to, again, give you an idea of what our collection looks like. We have spent more and more money on collections every year. Again, it represents one of the primary values to the community of, of what a library has to offer is having stuff on the shelf, having a variety of materials and a variety of formats. So we add material all the time. Last year, we added two thousand five hundred eighty-one adult books, twenty-three hundred youth books and eight hundred and eighty-three DVDs. That's about seven percent of our total collection is replaced on an annual basis. We also weed a lot of material that is out of date, maybe the information in it is no longer accurate, people have stopped borrowing it, a lot of popular series just lose their popularity after a while, or other authors become prominent and become really popular and we have space for them, need to create space for those items. The community uses the library in a number of ways, community use of our meeting rooms. And again, this is something that has not quite achieved the full level of participation we used to experience at the library. But just in the first quarter of, of this year, forty-eight different organizations outside the library have used our, the on room and the east room. We've reopened our boardroom to the public. And there's just a sample list of the, of the organizations that have, that use the library space, social organizations, political organizations, church organizations, Boy Scouts, Buffalo Soldiers Motorcycle Club. We welcome every, every group that, that kind of doesn't have a, a place of their own to come in and use our room, our rooms, shall we say. And a lot of activities, of course, in those rooms are ours. If you look at our calendar, you'll see that every day, there's either the library or another organization constantly coming in to use those, that meeting space. So it's a hugely valuable resource for the community. And that's one thing through our planning process that we heard over and over is people like the idea of the library being a community hub. It's a place for books, it's a place to meet, it's a place to work, it's a place to have organizational meetings, it's a place to come to programs. So it's not just a collection of books you walk in and pick one, select one and leave. Our, you probably heard of our Wiggle Workshop program. We had so many people in there last week that we had people turning away. Yes, that we moved a lot, a lot of stuff out. We bought this big cart that we put all our, our chairs on that would move out of the room. We haven't had to do that before, but we did, we rolled it out to create more and more space in the corner. But this is what happened the first time we did it. It succeeded so well, we started having a second session. So we might need to do that in order to accommodate all the people that want to bring their kids to that event. The strategic plan is a major part of our lives at the library now. We spend a lot of time and effort hearing from the community and, and planning the future of the organization. The vision of the library, the mission, the values and the guiding principles are all developed by the board with the admin team in response to the input that we receive from the community through a survey and from in-depth interviews with about twenty different people. The key concepts that came from the community input are in the bottom there, what people like best, what they see as the greatest opportunities, what people like least and the greatest challenges. So you can see that there are some common themes in, that they love the collections, they really like the staff, the greatest opportunity, we should be a go, go-to place for all. Expand partnerships to bring services outside the library. We do meet with several preschools. We provide story hours in those locations. That's a program that we started. Again, COVID sort of interrupted that, but it's been reestablished and we are constantly looking to build that, those kind of relationships out in the organization. If some people can't get library services or children, their parents are working, they can't bring them to the library, we could bring services to them. You'll see one theme that you'll see under what people like best is the caring staff. And I think, again, that's an important function of what we do. If all we did was offer a collection of books and DVDs, we would be a store, and we're not. People like the relationships, they like the conversations, they, they like us to guide them and advise them about where to find information, how to use technology. If you like this, you might like that. I read this, what else can you suggest? What people like least, the library floor plan, condition of the parking lot, which was funny because this was all, this story took place in June and I, and the parking lot project got started later that summer. So we look like geniuses. You said parking lot's a problem and look, by the end of the year, it's all done. I try to take complete credit for that, but I don't think it worked. Greatest challenges are technological change, funding, aging population, competition with other ways to read and, and listen and watch, and that's something that we deal with all the time. First, the internet was going to put it out of business and didn't, and then Amazon was going to put us out of business in ebooks. Every time there's a new type of tech, technology or a new way for people to get their hands on the type of products that we have, so to speak, we rise to the occasion, we add them to our collection and offer them to the public for free, which is very effective. So the last page in the report are the specific goals that we have attained already in 2023. There are four main themes that came out of our planning process. The first one is effective communication. One thing we heard from a lot of people is, I'm not quite sure what's going on at the library, or how, how can I get more information about the library? Do you have a newsletter, things like that? So one of our ideas was the higher website and marketing consulting firm, we've done that. We hired a, a local firm called S J C Marketing that's going to work with us to develop new logos, branding and redesign our website. Hire a digital marketing specialist, so we, we hired someone in January twenty-three, so we've made major progress on those goals. We don't have a firm timeline yet, but the idea is to get the branding, the website and everything done by the end of the summer. So that the library will have, my goals and the, my experience about branding, it sounded, well, what does, what does a library need a brand for? I don't know, what is, what does McDonald's need a brand for? What does, any organization needs to be recognized? And some, something that people automatically associate with that library can identify. And my experience was walking home and about a block and a half down, I see this scrap of junk in the middle of the street. It's orange, it's got a white interior with a little brown or dark black circle. It's a Reese cup. I knew it, then in there. Everyone knows a Reese cup from a hundred feet away. So that's what we're looking for, for a new library brand, branding logos, is when people see an advertisement in the paper, they know it's us. When people see a flyer somewhere in the community, they know it's us. There's a constant reminder of the library's here, the library's an important organization, and we have something to offer everybody. So it doesn't just kind of get mixed up or, or lost in the other sea of advertisement and marketing that everybody's sort of subject to on a daily basis. Creating opportunities for outreach within the community. Our youth services coordinator's been working with the Parks Department and they're going to install a book walk down at the Landing Park in June. They, again, they, they visited four different preschools and provided story hours to four hundred and ten children in the first quarter of this year. We're going to have a booth at the city market every second Saturday. We've held a concert series. Again, Mr., the people who donated the money from, in memory of Mr. Mitchell, we, we dedicated that money to providing music. We, we spoke with his, with his little, and she said, that sounds like a great idea, something he would like. And the final concert will be on Saturday, June tenth. We are cosponsor, we're sponsoring the first summer concert that Main Street's doing at Haymarket Square. So again, it's an opportunity to have a booth, to talk about the library, to, to remind people in the community that if you haven't been back, come back. We're not just a place for books and DVDs, you know, here's, here's music and here's e-content, just an entire range of services that a lot of people may or may not be aware of. Exceptional Services, that's one, of course, that's at the heart of what we're doing to provide the day-to-day services and the kind of things that we do for everybody. Hiring, training, retaining dedicated staff, sounds like a simple thing, but it's not easy these days, as everybody can tell you. Attracting and retaining quality employees is tough, the competition is tough. Other opportunities, we, we had three people who were interested in library jobs, all scheduled interviews, two of them backed out literally forty-eight hours in advance because I got another higher paying job with somebody else, or I found another full-time job over here. So we're really looking at making that an important part of, of providing good service because when you train someone, you want them to stay. They're informed, they know what they're doing, they know what they're talking about. You don't want to constantly have to retrain people. So the development, implement engaging services and programs, create a, curate a balanced collection of physical and digital resources. Since I started in 2014, our collection budgets have increased fifty-seven percent. I really, and the whole library board of supports and the admin team helps, put budgets together that emphasize putting things on the shelves and making things available for patrons. We introduced an online music service called Freegal back in April. Again, building a digital collection is as important as providing things on the shelf. And since then, patrons have streamed six thousand songs and downloaded four hundred and five, so it was an immediate hit. People are really, really using that. Our contemporary facilities goal is to research and plan for a site a facility meets the needs of the community, investigate and solicit funding for improved facilities with library partners. We build a facilities development team with three library board members, four residents, myself, our assistant director, and we've met several times to discuss how to meet facility needs expressed on that community survey and in interviews. So we're looking at hiring, possibly hiring a consultant to do needs assessment to help us figure out, based on this plan, based on the type of services people want, how could we do it? Can we come up with a floor plan that'll show where it got out of go? There are a lot of features about the building that are dated, that don't support the kind of needs that people have and express the, what they, what they want to see the library do. So we're, we're working on getting that off the ground, too. And that's probably the main, my main function, my main goal for all of this.
Some other organizations are working on needs assessments as well. So if you have something you want to dovetail with.
City?
Talk to United Way.
Okay. City organizations, I, I guess there's.
Organizations, yeah.
But I guess.
I know several of them have talked to me about, because, because the sisters did a needs assessment many years ago, community-wide, and so that's kind of, that was county-wide, but you might talk to some of your cohorts on the, the Human Services Council. Just see who is working on that, if anybody's working on that. It's quite a difficult process.
I've done them before. It's a real challenge, but I think it's really exciting because the, it took us so long. I felt like after, in 2020, we got beat up and we're pushed in a corner and we spent the next two years just kind of covered up and getting thumped. And for the first time since then, we were taking positive steps. We're, we're assuming a little bit, a lot more control over our future rather than just reacting to things beyond, way beyond our ability or our control. So that has actually pretty much fired up the staff and everybody. On Thursday, we're going to have our first quarterly checkup for our strategic plan. So all the teams and all the staff members who, who were assigned to, are volunteered to tackle different parts of the plan will report what kind of progress they've made, any kind of program ideas, any kind of service ideas, anything related to those four main goals that, that their input is gathering. And they're involved on a, on a daily basis in, in working to make this plan turn real, which is pretty exciting. Youth, and I wanted to let everybody know, Summer Reading has been scheduled. So there's youth programs on one side, all the adult programs in the summer on the flip side. One of the adult programs that Cindy McGuire puts together is a, works with the other library directors, so that all the libraries have an adult program where everybody, they select one book that is, that is read by either short story selected from a book or a book that all the adult participants at all the libraries in the area read. And this year, it's all about crime. So there is a book that they're all reading, they're all, every library bases its own program on a story or some aspect of, of solving a crime. And at the end of the summer, there will be a program, it'll be basically a murder mystery for everybody to join together, have a little wine, have a little snack and solve a mystery. So it's an interesting adult program and it's something that for years and years, the library, most libraries, will focus a lot of their efforts on kids programs, but I think Cindy's done a great job creating programs for adults of all kinds. We had a, a plant giveaway coming up, get music programs, so there's almost always something going on at the library that, again, is we're trying to meet that community engagement role, the community hub role, to make sure that we offer a wide variety of services that will meet the community's express need.
Definitely appreciate the updates. Only question that I, two questions, any update on the bookmobile?
That's part of the discussion, where we're talking about developing a, a new facility. If you have a bookmobile, you need a place to park it. We haven't even begun any of that stage yet. It's, it's certainly on the list of things that would be nice to have because if you look at the, I plotted a map of Leavenworth that shows all the patrons within a one mile, with a half mile, one mile, five mile, ten mile radius. And the farther you get from the library in the center of those circles, the, the less penetration we have, so to speak. So there are lots of people who live beyond that, outside of those radius that would probably love to have service brought to them in one form or another. So we've talked about that as a possibility. Some libraries will, you know, have small branches out there, but a, a mobile library would be able to reach, senior citizens would be able to go to park, so. But on a, on a practical basis, you need to have a place to, to park it and act a place to pull into a building to load it, so you're not loading and unloading material in rain, snow and whatever Mother Nature is throwing at you. But that's, that's something that would be definitely maybe, you know, sort of a little buzz in the back of our, of our minds thinking if, if this is a way to serve the community down the road, how can we accommodate that?
And then I've seen quite a few organizations have been using the library meeting room. That is completely free, correct?
We used to have a fee for, for, for organizations that were non, nonprofit was free, everybody else got to pay. I recommended the board that we stop charging anything at all, and we did. And we don't allow sales. You can't use the room to sell products, but it doesn't matter to me if you're a for-profit, for-profit or nonprofit, it's a public space, so there, there's no fee for it. The restrictions we have are based on, we kind of have to ration out use. We can't become someone's regular, we want your room every Tuesday forever. We simply can't do that because it, it removes, I'm, I'm sure that if we did that for a year, there wouldn't be another slot open for anybody. So we do try to control that kind of access. You could have it, but you can only book it ninety days in advance. So if you want to continue to have it, you got to be on it and get in there and book a room. People can do it online, we approve that, and of course, we make sure that we have a contact info and they understand the way the rules work. But, yeah, we try to keep all the rooms as, as open and free as possible.
That's good, appreciate it. Great update. Any other questions or comments?
No. Great, Joe.
Thanks all very much.
Keep up the good work.
Moving on to item number three, three twelve Delaware Street discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Chris, I'm going to lead our assistant C. Minister, guide this conversation. I think we're all aware of this building, but we're going to walk you through kind of where we are and make sure some direction on the next steps.
As Paul said, Mayor and Commissioner, this study session, I don't want to review options for next steps on three twelve Delaware Street, previously known as the Youth Achievement Center. So there is a little bit of background and I'll just hit some of the highlights. This actually goes back to nineteen ninety-nine when thirty thousand dollars in grant funds and a seventy thousand dollar loan was provided for the purchase and renovation of three ten and three twelve Delaware Street, used to be two separate buildings. Between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and nine, I have about sixty-six pages of legal agreements and city commission notes about loan extensions and interest rates. And that really resulted in the two thousand and nine agreement that outlined if the Youth Achievement Center dissolved as an organization or if the building discontinued its use as a Youth Achievement Center, then the seventy thousand dollars would be repaid during that sale. Both of those events occurred, the Y A C dissolved and the building discontinued its use as a youth center and the property was conveyed to the Land Bank during the city commission's March twenty twenty-three meeting, obviously as the meeting at the Leavenworth Land Bank. So I have just a couple slides just to orient you to the current state of the building and then we can talk about the engineering reports. So that, if you, it's a little hard to see, but if you look at the, the slide on your left, that's really if you walk in the front door from Delaware Street into the Youth Achievement Center, you come into this large open area. It used to be a bar, that's the reason there's a, a bar there, it's obviously been repurposed. The second photo is if you turn directly around and look in the front door that you just came in, that's the, the front door off of Delaware Street. And you can see that the white beams are on the sides of both of those. That's what separates the two areas of buildings, this is one of the primary areas and those white beams will become important in a minute. This is the recreation area that's behind those white beams. You'll notice that there's some caution tape warning you not to go over there. And, and this is why, because what's also in that section behind the white beams is where the floor has entirely collapsed. You can see the items that were on the floor at the time, chairs and furniture was captured in that collapse. So that's really kind of in, in three slides, the current state of the, of the building. So the city contracted with an engineering company to do an initial assessment of the building condition based on what you saw. There is a report that was included in your packet and we also have Earl Wilkinson, the Deputy Director for Public Works here, if there are technical questions on the structure. Really, the report helped staff know where there are safety concerns in getting into the building. And then it also will help a future owner with a more accurate state of the building. It saves them the time and cost for having to do an engineer's assessment, so it makes sense to, to have this done. You can see in the report that based on the flooring, a complete replacement is recommended. There are some options that range roughly fifty to a hundred thousand dollars just to replace that flooring. And depending on which flooring option is selected, there'll be utility work as well that's not included in the cost. The visual inspection also included the roof and the walls and it sort of gave some highlights or areas of tension that might be needed there. Walking in the building yesterday, you could even see that some of the other areas of flooring are separating from the walls. So it's certainly in a state of disrepair, might be better than kindly. At the same time, the property has some positives. The first one is it's expensive to build a new building right now. So that really encourages redevelopment of something that's existing. The second is its location. So as you know, this is a building in the downtown along Delaware Street with the landscaping, the planners, the benches, the historic lighting that's there. There's some good ADA accessibility, so there's some ramping along the sidewalks. And there's also the movie theater, which I think you can see, this is the shot out the front door of three twelve Delaware. You can literally see the movie theater that's diagonal, you can see the Home Two Suites there, potentially a good amount of foot traffic from the theater, the shops, restaurants, bars, and the two event spaces, which is the riverfront Community Center and the Heritage Center are both about two blocks away. So it's an area of activity and it could be the opportunity to connect with the right buyer. So that leads me to really the next steps to identify a future buyer. So the city doesn't have a municipal purpose for this building, which means at this point we don't see this becoming a office space, rec center, anything like that. So really, the idea would be to connect it to a party who would revitalize the space. We could, the commission could consider an R F P process similar to what we did for six hundred Cherokee. This is where we solicit proposals for someone to purchase and redevelop property. The R F P for six hundred Cherokee was included in your packet, if that's a helpful reference. You recall, that's where we put out the. You recall that's where we put out the proposal or we put out their RP, we accept proposals, we review those and the commission decides which one we'd like to move forward with. The alternative to that is really to make this a simple real estate transaction, work with an agent and the highest bidder is who would end up to be the buyer of the property. There's really pros and cons for both options. The simple pro of a real estate option might be it could be done more quickly and that in theory could allow the property to start having work on it sooner. Although I'm not sure, but there's a great sense of urgency besides the general building deterioration that could continue with this. However, RFP does allow the commission to review with a potential buyer, get community feedback and the chance to select which option might fit best into the downtown. And I will show you the 600 Cherokee we had from, excuse me, the intent. So this is where we said, here's the proposal we'd like to see for this property. So we could continue. Oh, it's not showing up on here. Let me see if I can. Excuse me. Just got to minimize the power. Give you a second.
Oh, that's a good view.
There we go. Okay. So this is again where we sort of put out some criteria that said, here's what we'd like to see for the building. So that way, as folks are evaluating, if this is a good use of their investment and this is something they want to do, it really fits what makes sense for the city. So again, that's included in your packet. And with that, if I can get through my sentence, I apologize. Grab a water in a second. Earl and I are here to really answer any questions you have about the structure of the property and really kind of hear your feedback on on next steps. I'm going to grab a water real quick.
Don't you come forward?
Yeah, come on, Earl.
Well, the reason, you know, we did it this way for the other building was it sat for 10 years or more. This one, it looks like that the the cost to bring it up to up to use would be at the most around 100, 100 to 200,000 or 100,000, 101,000. Is that correct according to this?
At least get the flooring in. So there are some issues with, I mean, the roof is probably good for a few years. That'll need to be replaced. And depending on what you do with the interior, there may or may not need to be some work done with the trust system. But the original system, it would be something where you'd go in and sister or basically, you know, double up on the the trust system. So I think it's very doable. I mean, really the floor, the the two things that happened with the floor is one, we can find no record that anyone actually did any plans for putting the concrete on it. However, it could have actually held, but the concrete sealed off the ability for the humidity to get out of the basement and they did not address any dehumidifiers in the basement. So you had a very wet environment, which also invites termites into the wood structure. So it's really was a perfect storm for the floor system to fail. So I don't really believe that putting in a new floor system would be that difficult. And you saw in the price that would, to me, that would be the most effective way to do it. I do believe there are other things that would need to be repaired, but.
But this is the big ones to get it back.
That's that's the big one. And a lot of it depends on what you want to make out of the building, obviously.
Yeah, Commissioner, I just want to be helpful and it would be at least the 50 or 100 to replace the floor. You're also potentially looking at a roof that might need some work, the walls, and those are just based on the engineering report. So that would be kind of to start and then you'd find some other items.
I would definitely be very much in favor of doing the RFP process like we did with Willcott 600 Cherokee because just because it's going to require everybody to put a little bit more legwork into putting together a proposal and they're going to have to have their ducks in a row more and it's going to have a little bit more teeth to get it this little bit longer process and RFPs are a pain. I mean, feel like some, right? But but knowing what we could get out of there, you guys mentioned that there's multiple parties interested already, you know, it would and that's the adjacent corner over there is or we're looking at maybe doing that gazebo.
Right.
So that could really start to develop a lot more of there, too. Maybe if we sprinkle that in, make sure everybody knows. I was curious if we went that route of the RFP process, would we be connected with which organizations again to get the word out?
So what we did for 600 Cherokee and what we could do for this one is Main Street, they keep a list that they distribute available downtown business or business locations. LCDC has location one, Lois, so we can post it on there. That is anyone looking for a lot or a building uses that as a search feature. We may have put it in the paper. I can't remember. Facebook, that tends to be shared and sort of travel around.
Yeah, I've had several business owners reach out to me and Corin about the building as well, too, just for the public, for their information, for their awareness. If they're interested in touring the building, what do they need to do? Just reach out to you directly?
I mean, the simple answer would be yes, we would include that in the RFP, what the process would be, whether we're going to have set times, whether, you know, it's it's on as staff has scheduling available to do that.
There's a safety factor.
So with this building, right, I mean, on touring, that's not city staff is probably going to have to sign a waiver and we're going to have to be aware, like you may not be able to, you know, you may not be able to go explore all the portions of the site just for safety. I mean, you see areas that are kind of cordoned off, so. But yes, we would want people to be in there. We would encourage if you have an engineer architect, we would facilitate all that, all that viewing. We want folks to make an informed decision.
Yeah, and the city don't have to put up any cost because this is a building that we currently already own.
I mean, it's currently in the Leavenworth Land Bank, yes.
Yep.
The RFP seems like, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I'm in favor of the RFP as well.
The RFP, I think, also gives us a much greater amount of control as to what actually goes into that space, you know, as opposed to, you know, real estate agent sells it and then, okay, we've got, you know, certain permitting and construction permits and all that kind of thing. And we'll have an idea of what's going to be there. But with the RFP, we'll know before anybody lays a hand on it, you know, what it's what it's going to be.
It would come back to the commission for consideration.
And you would structure an agreement where there's benchmarks, even so much as not knowing the role is somebody buying it and not just and just not doing anything with it. So you select, you could also have a development benchmarks, much like we did with Willcott and that went very well.
You can buy it, but, you know, we want to see what you're going to do with it and when are you going to get it done?
Proof of financing, all that kind of.
I go along, I go along with that. How old is that building? Any idea?
In the engineer report, they estimated it around 100 years old.
Was it?
So that's probably a it's not new.
Right. It qualifies for historic text.
It's not in the historic district. So it's it's actually outside of the downtown historic district. So I'm not sure on that.
We do have an active RFP for a review of the downtown historic district boundaries. That was a commission goal and that's out now. So there's a possibility, but not currently it's not.
I had no idea it was that old.
I didn't either. I remember when it was a diner when I was a kid, but I don't know what it was before then.
I just remember the teen club when it was a hoss, that's it.
I've gone into I've gone through that building before, you know, but I'd never thought, you know, and I even then I thought it was in pretty bad shape, at least 10 years ago. But but 100, when I read that, so 100 years, you're kidding. I thought it was like maybe the 50s.
Yeah.
So we're in.
You can tell by looking underneath.
Yeah, that's what you can tell.
Basement. In the in the old brick and stuff, but I was curious about that. Yeah, Lions Club keep reminding me that, you know, they worked on it for about five years on Saturdays, fixing it all up and making, you know, making the bathrooms. But nobody, nobody, I remember being in that basement a long time ago, but I don't remember being.
Short ceilings.
Dirt floor.
Yeah.
They dug out a lot of, a lot of stuff under there because it had been used for coal. So you don't have to be that old.
So then the only other thing remaining is how long to put it out. I think we want to err on the side of longer. You know, I'd say I'd probably say 60 days. So we can do an initial push and then maybe 30 days out, do another push, just because it is a lot of work to put together an RFP. Contact your bank, contact your bank, get a roofer in there if you want to and a contractor and stuff like that. So that's all right with the commission.
Sounds good.
And this is just 310 or 310 and 312?
So the property records say 310 and 312. Apparently it used to be two buildings, but it's sort of become 312. So the mailbox is 312.
Yeah, you can kind of basically it was like from here and then from there with two different addresses.
Oh, what?
But it doesn't it does not include the admin building. Yeah, that's a whole different building.
That's actually 314 Delaware. It's privately owned.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, too.
Do we know what's in 314?
It's it's a private ownership.
Nothing right now. Yeah, I think there's some plans for it, but.
All right, all right.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Item number four, discussion on discussion on city commission meeting schedule.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'll handle this item. Just as a quick background for those listening to, it's in the policy report, but City Code Section 2-52 outlines and defines the required city commission meeting schedule and outlines the differences between regular meetings, special meetings and work sessions. Applicable language is below regular meetings. The regular meetings of the city commission shall be orderly, shall ordinarily be held in the commission chamber of City Hall Building, second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 6:00 PM. Looking at item C, work sessions and study sessions, no agenda is required for a work session or study session and no binding action may be taken. So what, long and short of that is there is no requirement that the city holds study sessions. We have just traditionally done that well before the time I've gotten here. The city's had four regularly scheduled meetings every Tuesday, well, the first through fourth Tuesdays. And that's why sometimes if we have a fifth Tuesday, there's no meeting that night because it's two study sessions and two regular meetings. Current practice is that along with the code required meetings, which are the regular meetings that we have held those study sessions on the third and first Tuesdays of each month. We did have some commission inquiry as to the number of meetings held each month, possible consolidation into fewer meetings, and so staff prepared the report in front of you for discussion tonight. We did review about a dozen other cities, really focusing on cities of the first class, which Leavenworth is, which there are no other cities in the county. That's always a distinction I like to make. The other cities in the in Leavenworth County are not cities of the first class and there's some distinctions, but also similar populations and really try to stick with the same form of government to try to compare apples to apples. I did not review meeting schedules of school districts or counties as those are really different types of organizations with different types of businesses. Of the 11, approximately 11 cities reviewed, we were the only entity that had four regular scheduled meetings a month. And then after that, the theme that emerged was that everybody does it differently. There are some that don't have study sessions at all. They may coordinate them into their regular meetings. They may hold special meetings here and there throughout the year. Some call for them as needed. I know Lansing, even though it's not city of the first class, they reserve one of the days of the month for a study session if it's needed. Some actually start their meeting with a study session and then at an hour's point in time, then they go into regular meeting and then they either finish it at the end. I think that's a remnant that nobody who even does it now would suggest because something runs long, you have somebody there, a presenter, a third party, they have to wait till the end of the meeting or if you finish really early, then you you can't start that regular meeting early because that's the time that it was published. Again, some reserve a date, fourth Tuesday of a month, for example, and hold only if needed. And so I did mention that recommended not to do the one where you start a study session and then go into regular meeting. And then not necessarily recommended to hold a date each month. It creates uncertainty whether you're having meeting or not. I think the discussion, one of the big points we need to talk about is public predictability of when their governing body is going to meet. I don't know that you want anybody unsure when city commission, when when their governing body is going to meet. And by holding that, it's hard to say, we're not having one, we are having one, we're not having one, we are having one. And so certainly the commission can do it what they wish because study session are not prescribed by ordinance. Any change to the meeting schedule would simply be done by consensus of the commission. We don't have to change code of ordinances or anything like that since we're not required to have them. And so that was the extent of the staff report, certainly here to answer any questions as well as our city clerk, if you have any questions, but open it up for discussion for the commission.
Yeah, I want to go around the table, start with Commissioner Leonhart. Any thoughts input?
No, I mean, it it really doesn't matter to me. I mean, if, you know, I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say, you know, whatever way we go, yeah.
Mr. England.
Really don't.
Well, I do not like the idea ever of having a meeting for the sake of, well, we have to have a meeting. That's that's a no go. That's a nonstarter to meet right off the bat. But the study sessions that we do have, generally, you know, we are here to do the people's, the citizens' work. You know, it's not that we came here because gee, let's have a Tuesday night out, you know, but we're here to do.
Hang out.
Yeah, you know, well, it wasn't people here to to hang out with, but.
Right, right.
That's not why we're here. We come here to do the people's work, you know, to do what the citizens expect us to do. So, you know, I I would think maybe a compromise might be to, if we don't have enough work to do, you know, two study sessions, maybe we decide that, okay, we're only going to have one study session a month from now on, which will require more planning, you know, ahead, you know, but.
With two regular meetings, two regular meetings and one study.
Well, the two regular meetings are already required by ordinance.
But the just one study.
But just have maybe just have one study session in between the two of them.
Okay, appreciate you. Mr. Martin?
You know, I I'm a big, I always tell everybody, I'm quality over quantity. So I'm all about have a meeting if you need to have one, make it highly impactful, get as much in as you can. And I just much rather get down to business and get stuff knocked out. So I don't know, you know, my, I guess my question is with what the material we normally or, you know, the items we normally discuss in our study session, is there anything that's time sensitive that would prevent us from being able to add them to a regular end of a regular city meeting? You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to remember through every study session. We had an overview for the library tonight. We discussed, you know, talking about what we're discussing here. I don't know. I don't know if it's anything that couldn't be combined, but.
Less than an hour for this meeting. I think people are, you know, but people tell me is can I come to study session and talk, is that a regular meeting? When is a regular meeting? When is it? And they get confused by that.
When they can talk.
I know people have told me that. I'm okay either way. I'm okay with your suggestion, too, but I I just, I think our our study sessions have been short. It's not like I can remember commission meetings where just the commission meeting would go to 10 o'clock at night and I don't ever want to see that again. That was that was just crazy. But but, you know, we've got, you know, our our staff keeps us on on track, you know, and our meetings go very efficiently, I think. So I would be okay with having a study session after a regular meeting and bringing it down to to two times or I'm okay with whatever you all want to do, so.
And maybe even try that for a bit, see what it's like over the summer and fall or something like that and, you know, if it works and everything, but I can't speak for every city, but I appreciate all that you keep everybody on track, you know. Love speed.
Yeah, we've looked at how to accommodate the items we have and and you could, you'd have to, you know, you'd have a little bit longer meeting here and there. If we did do one, there'd probably need a little bit of grace from the commission to every once in a while on a regular meeting, have a study session type item on there. I don't, you know, that gets a little bit just because of the timeliness of it. But, you know, we could make whatever work, whatever the commission wants to do.
Yeah, and so just out of five years that I've been here, I've been used to having the meetings each week and whenever we didn't have enough items to put on the agenda, you know, that meeting would get canceled. And I think that's what sparked this discussion because our last meeting was canceled due to the fact we didn't have a lot of items to add to the agenda. I'm big on. I'm big on consistency when it comes to, uh, you know, informing the public, the meetings. It's an opportunity for individuals who are interested in finding out information, what's going on with the city. They can expect to attend a study session or a city commission meeting. And so I'm just speaking from the perspective of being used to this process. But if there is, uh, if we could consolidate the items and go to one study session a month, uh, and keep the two regular meetings. Uh, I'm more in favor of that instead of just doing the two meetings, the two regular meetings and, uh, combining the items on the agenda. The same night as the, the regular meetings, because what I don't want to happen is if, you know, we get to rushing on certain items just because we want to get out of here. No one likes long meetings at all. And I think we could overlook some important items just to get through because we know we got to move on to the next thing.
And, you know, when we cancel a meeting or we don't have one because we don't have enough, you know, the public, and I have got people question that. It's like, well, you know, why aren't you having a meeting? Or a study session, you know? Isn't there something that you need to talk about or? So I think if we, I'm right there with you with the have the two meetings and you're thinking about the study session in between.
Yeah.
That would be good.
I said at least try one.
As long as we're not having a first, a meeting, like it would be a regular meeting and a study session.
And then a meeting.
Regular meeting. And then have the first week off of the month, if that, if it, if that would, would work.
Cause then it would be more, we wouldn't ever cancel anything. Cause we'd always have something. See what I mean, so it would be.
And it's consistency, you know what I mean?
Well, another thing you might do, and this says staff go back to work and do it again. When's the last time, you know, we just recently canceled a, or didn't have a, a study session. How often does that happen in a year?
So I'll, I'll give you a little background on that. It depends on the commission. So five or six years ago, that's the direction that the commission wanted to go. Let's try to have the agenda management do that. But then when, sometimes if you get a, a new commission or new commissioners or different personalities, then it's, it becomes sort of hard for me to cancel meetings because they don't, you know. So if something is set, that saves me, the, or the manager, who's ever sitting in the seat, from canceling it. And maybe some people like that, some people don't. Um, and so that's kind of how it happened. We were going that direction, then it was like, well, we need to have something every week. There was an expectation of that, so that's why we got back on the four meetings a month and so it kind of depends on the commission.
We made it six o'clock, which when we used to meet at seven, it put us into. Later, so six is nice.
Yeah, I'm just not in favor consolidating the regular meeting with study session. I think that's overboard and there's no consistency.
And that would apply to, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you this. That would apply to have our regular meeting and then have a study session?
Yeah, I don't think that's effective at all.
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily agree, but I was just thinking, uh, when we were going through our goal setting a few weeks ago, we're talking about even, um, just agenda consolidation. How many times do we own different groups coming in presenting? Move away from the quarterlies, maybe do a biannual or annual, you know? So I, I don't know, I guess that, I goes back to my question of what is, um, I'm the type of guy, if I'm in a meeting during the day with, in my day job. And there's folks not talking or something is not, not of value, it's like, why are we doing this? You know, what's, what's the?
Right. You value your time.
Yeah. It's safe to having a meeting and not doing anything, you're all there.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm not saying nothing is not important, anything is not important, but, uh, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not into just rushing anything either. I don't mind being here until ten o'clock on a night that we have a meeting. Of course, who wants to be, but, um, you know, I don't know that we, we couldn't consolidate though, and that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
I'm in favor of the one study session. Like if, if we want to make any changes, uh, I would say that'd be a step moving forward. We'll have another time, like no meetings will get canceled that way.
Well, I, I tend to agree the, uh, the idea of not having the really long, you know, a, a meeting and then a study session. Cause by then, by the time you get into the study session, some of the people that do come and they're waiting and waiting and waiting for that subject to come up that's on the agenda for the study session. You know? They lose interest and they head out. So, you know, I think it's, it, it is a better idea to have a separate study session, not on the same night as a meeting.
I'd be willing to try that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
So we have regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday, so you're talking about the third Tuesday and in between the two?
And the study session, yeah. Worth a try in public, if that doesn't work, please let us know. Reach out, email, call, yell at us, let us know. Because we definitely want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the public as well.
Yeah, now for the study session, it really will require looking further ahead.
Correct.
Each time we have a study session, you know, because you're not going to be trying to cover information that may be used in the second week. Or the fourth week, but it'll also cover the second week of next month.
It's common among cities who don't have study sessions to have, um, other aspects of an agenda. For example, um, a staff reports section. So you have a regular meeting, so say we have an update on the youth achievement center and, and we just had our study session. So we may have to do something like a staff report item that we may not have, but if we need it, that we have that. And that, and that's how they accommodate those study sessions, is you can do it in a regular meeting, you just put it in three different places. Proclamations and presentations at the top, staff reports is where you do your updates, and discussion items at the end. So, uh, you can fold it in, but we would probably have to modify the regular agenda a little bit. Because of going to, going to one.
So, uh, Mr. Wilson, would you be game for, maybe we try that for a while and then, um, you know, can we do it for the summer? And see if we, we layer in, see how those are going, and then maybe look at a consolidation opportunity for the fall?
I think the study session is important, I think that should be separate, like no matter what. That's just my thoughts on that. Uh, gives us an opportunity to, uh, really dive deep into what we studied, uh, come up with the consensus, uh, just hear feedback from the different commissioners. Because we can't make any decisions, we can't make any formal decisions. But I just want to have that time separated, uh, you know, just so we can, uh, just do some brainstorming. I think that's really important outside of our regular meetings.
Well, since we don't have to change ordinances and all that, I think we should, should try it from somewhere.
Try, yeah, try it.
Yeah, try it to say September.
This isn't working at all.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm game, I'm going to try that. I'm just, if we can, since we don't, like you said, don't have to decide like any ordinance, I just want everybody to keep, if we can, keep an open mind on, let's continue to improve and, you know. Whatever we can do to keep running efficiently is my, my big thing.
I think maybe we do this through September. And then, uh, you know, another aspect of it is, okay, what kind of a burden has the, how much of the burden has been increased?
It'll have to be next month if we did start it, so we got the agenda.
Well, so our next study session would be the third, third Tuesday, so then all we'd have to do is to look at basically the first study session in June. But that's, usually that far out, it's pretty easy to move stuff.
Okay.
But the, another, another aspect we want to consider after this trial period is, okay, how much of an additional burden is it putting on members of staff? You know, who have to look, okay, that far ahead now?
More, more of the overly burden now having a couple extra meetings a month, and if we went to two, then we take the burden off them.
We're, we're, we're good with what, whatever the meeting schedule is, we're, we're good with that.
The staff's all going, yes.
We're good with whatever the schedule is.
But just let us know, Paul. And, uh, but like I said to the public overall, man, just, just, uh, let us know. Like I said, if it's flowing smoothly, able to keep up with it, uh, yeah, feedback is important because at the end of the day, uh, consistency is key.
Alright.
Number five item, uh, traffic calming study report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commission, um, as part of the ARPA discussion, uh, we talked about exploring traffic calming solutions, uh, traffic calming pilot program to look. Specifically, we, we focused in on the area north of Leavenworth High School. Uh, a number of reasons, we didn't just pick it at random. Mainly it's its location. I think it's important that, uh, of course, there's neighborhoods around the city that experience, um, some perceived speeding issues. This is, uh, a little different in that you have, uh, hundreds of teenage drivers leaving every day. Exiting tenth is one issue, it's not too much of an issue going south, but going north, there's some pretty free range, uh, north-south streets. That provide an opportunity for some, uh, higher, uh, speed traffic. That was the nicest way that I could put it.
Free, free range was a good description.
And so what we did, uh, based on the commission, uh, just, uh, discretion to, uh, set aside some ARPA funds. So we hired BG consultants to look at the area, to study it. They studied traffic counts, different times, they studied speed patterns, they looked at the road profile, the road condition. And then they opened their toolbox, they have, uh, all, we looked at all sorts of stuff. Everything from, uh, jogging the, the roadway over, uh, roundabouts, all sorts of different options of what it would be. We also did that in the context of budget. Um, everything gets expensive. And so what you have before you was, uh, what they put out and, um, that's the map up on the wall. And what you'll see, what I really want to focus on are the orange bars. Those are speed tables. So these are not as abrupt and short as, uh, speed humps, they're flattened, um, out, they're pretty, if, if you've seen the news recently, uh, Overland Park is putting together a residential speed. Uh, calming, uh, table and matrix, um, and one of the tools that they've found very successful in their program is speed tables. And so the number and frequency are based on, um, an engineering solution to try to guide behavior. So there's some on the east-west streets, and that's because you don't want people avoiding the one in front of you by turning east, you know, like on Pennsylvania Street. So that throughout that network of, of streets north of the high school, uh, that each way has some sort of engineering solution. Uh, accompanied signs, uh, and obstructions that, um, help regulate speed. Uh, what's not included, you'll see the, the two blue, uh, boxes, those are raised crosswalks. Those are also an enhanced pedestrian safety issue. Those, uh, we have a co, cost in there, but the cost of adding those exceeds the budget for the traffic calming, uh, ARPA fund set aside. And so those we would look at, depending on how bids came in, um, as a phase two, uh, project. Um, so then I want to take you down to the cost sheet. And so, uh, phase one would be all of the speed humps on Clem Street, Grand Street, Pennsylvania Street, uh, the speed humps with, uh, removal, signage, markings. Uh, erosion control, traffic control, mobilization, and a really large contingency, uh, plus building instruction services. And that one hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred is still below what the commission allocated. I think you set aside two hundred thousand dollars for a pilot program. We would expect for it to come in well below, but it's still a big number. So, um, there's no way to do this, uh, ad hoc, I guess it would be the right term to just go in and, and put some speed tables in. I think you would want to use the engineer's placement. These are based on, uh, their study in the field about what would be the most effective, uh, tool to, to, to calm traffic. So, uh, really the point person on this was Earl Wilkinson, our Deputy Director of Public Works. So technical questions should be directed to him, and I'm just looking for some, uh, discussion on if this looks like something we want to do or if something that, uh, we don't want to go forward with.
So when you say s, it's speed humps, now are we looking at the ones that's over there on Clem Street, that style?
No, so these would be permanent. So these would not be, so the ones that are there now de, destroy the roadway. They're, they're, they're bored into the ground, they have a lifespan, um, snow plows hit them, wear and tear on them. So these are cutting the section out and these would be concrete installed permanent speed, uh, humps.
They're a little bit, they're, they're shorter, but they have more depth.
And there's signage and they're, they're a little more visible than the, than the, the temporary one. The temporary ones are not cheap, but these would be permanent, uh, concrete, um, structures.
Okay. The pedestrian crosswalks, is that, I mean, that's, wouldn't be part of the calming part though, right? I mean.
It's a safety issue, I think, is, it, it also serves as.
Pedestrians that, around this area then that.
Cause we don't have a lot of sidewalks in the area.
So what that does is it's more of the visual calming because, you know, part of what we would do is put proper signage out there and that work. And actually, if we wanted to later do these, it could be something we put in for a grant.
I think we ought to see what we, what the other stuff first, the other.
We can do it as like a, an add-on, turn it to the bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just later on maybe.
Oh, any other questions?
Now, I, I, you know, I like the detail of this and, and the idea of changing behaviors, you know, um. Any type of speed mitigation, that hey, if it works, we know it's going to be okay for the roads, uh, I'm not going to tear them up long-term. And, and if it does the job, then we know we might have a new solution around town potentially, so.
This for, for around the high school, it's just always been an issue, always.
It's a great test bed.
We get complaints about other places around town, but this has always been an issue.
Yeah, it has.
You hear, you hear from people all the time on it.
So we have a consensus, if there's another question?
Yeah, so the bid would still come back, all this consensus would be allow us to, to put it out to bid and then come back to the commission to, for approval at some point in the future.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our study session, one hour and five minutes.
We did, I'm, I'll, I'll check what happened to Sister Dan, I believe she was, she was confirmed, so, um, I'm not sure what happened, so I'll, I'll check on that.
So just want to go around the table as we close out this meeting, uh, any updates, start with you, Paul?
Uh, nothing at this time, no, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Leonhart?
Yes, I did. I got to participate in Xavier School has a PENPEL program and it goes through, through the school year. And we actually, uh, met the other week, so I told her I would show it. Uh, mine was Ruthie, she's a fourth grader, and she painted this picture for me. So, hey Ruthie, I told her to watch. And, uh, no, it was a really nice program, it, you know, it gets kids just to actually write letters, you know? The, the old fashioned way instead of doing things on computers, so. They write, yeah. So, uh, so hey Ruthie, it was fun and great meeting you, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
This, I thought this meeting was very, very, um, a, a great meeting. I mean, we talked about a lot of important stuff, we heard a lot of good information, you know, from, uh, uh, Matt Nojanen.
No, yes.
You know, Noyanen.
No, yeah, no, it's no, yeah.
It was, I was just really happy with the results of this meeting.
Well, I'm glad you're happy. I think we're all happy, aren't we?
Folks, if you weren't happy with the results of this meeting, send me a, an email, let me know.
Send it to Ed now.
I appreciate it, Commissioner Martin?
No, just, so we're sure everybody good rest of the week?
Just a reminder that the LV Ride launch is going to be Thursday at, uh, five-thirty at the Guidance Center.
Is that, is that out back?
Doing well, out back.
Out back there, okay.
With their park.
Okay.
I'm, I'm assuming so, Melissa's involved in it, so, yeah, I'm assuming so.
Unless of weather, basically you move inside.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, uh, May thirteenth, we're still good, uh, on the splash pad?
Eleven AM to one PM, we'll have hot dogs and chips and cookies and, um, unveil the, the splash park, so.
That's exciting.
Nice Saturday.
It's nice weather, you know?
Uh, and so just so no one's alarmed, uh, the decision is not going to be, uh, made by the commission, uh, but definitely want to have a study session and look into, uh, learn. Seeing what the pros and cons is moving forward on changing the form of government. Uh, very interesting to learn in the history of why we currently have our, uh, council management form of government. And also want to look into what it will look like after having a strong mayor-elect form of government and a weak mayor, strong, uh, elect form of government. And so just really want to see the pros and cons, education purpose for the public, uh, the commission would not be making this change. Uh, just really want to provide education to the commissioners as well as to the public. Uh, the decision will have to come up to the public, if they decide to move forward to making that change.
For a vote, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
Yep.
God bless, that concludes our meeting.
Okay.